Sahana vavatu Sahana bhunaktu Sahaviryam karava vahai Mahavedvishava vahai Shanti shanti shantihi Yogena chittasya padena vaacha Malam sharirasya chavaitya kena Yo paakarottam pravaram unina Patanjalam pranjalirana tosnii Aabahu purushakaram Shankha chakra sidharinam Sahasra shirasam svetam Pranamamipatanjalam Shrimate anuntaya Nagarajaya namo namaha Shri Krishna Vagishyateswarabhya Samprapta chakrangaana bharyasara Shrinutna rangendrayata samarpita svam Shri Krishna maaryam guruvryam Virodhhe kaarthike mase Shatata rakrthodayam Yoga charyan Krishna maaryam Guruvryamaham hache Shri Gurubhyo namaha Atha samadhhipadaha Atha yoga nu shasanam
Atha yoga nu shasanam
Yogaha chittavritti nirodhaha
Yogaha chittavritti nirodhaha
Tada drashthuhu swarupe avasthanam
Tada drashthuhu avasthanu
Vritti saarupyam itaratra
Vritti saarupyam itaratra
Vrittayah panchatayah klishtha klishtha
Vrittayah panchatayah klishtha klishtha
Pramaana viparyaya vikalpa netra smrtayah
Pramaana viparyaya vikalpa smrtayah
Pratyaksha anumana agamaha pramaanani
Pratyaksha anumana agamaha pramaanani
Shabdagnyananupati vastushunyu vikalpaha Abhava pratyayalam bana tamovritter netra Abhava pratyayalam bana tamovritter netra Anubhotavisaya asampramoshaha smritihi Anubhotavisaya asampramoshaha smritihi Abhyasavaira gyabhyaam tannirodhaha Abhyasavaira gyabhyaam tannirodhaha Tatrashtitau yatno bhiasaha Tatrashtitau yatno bhiasaha Satu tirghkala nairantarya satkara adara Aasevito triddha bhoomihi Satu tirghkala nairantarya satkara adara Aasevito triddha bhoomihi Krshtanushravika visaya vitrasnasya Vashikarasanyavaira gyam Krshtanushravika visaya vitrasnasya Vashikarasanyavaira gyam Tatparam purushakhyate gunavaitrasnyam
Tatparam purushakhyate gunavaitrasnyam
Vitarka vichara ananda asmita rupa Anugamath sampragnyataha
Vitarka vichara ananda asmita rupa Anugamath sampragnyataha
Virama pratyaya abhyasapurvaha Samskarasheshaha anyaha Virama pratyaya abhyasapurvaha Samskarasheshaha anyaha Hava pratyayoh videha prakrtilayana Hava pratyayoh videha prakrtilayana Shraddha virya smriti samadhhipragnya
Shraddha virya smriti samadhhipragnya
Mrdhumadhya adhimatrathvaat Tatopi visheshaha Tatopi visheshaha Ishvara pranidhanaadva Settle down into a comfortable posture with your spine erect Bring your awareness to the breath Observing from where your breath is born Deep inside the heart space The prana sthana Observe how with each inhalation The breath opens out, expands into the whole body And with each exhalation Feel the movement of the breath going back into the heart Relaxing the abdomen, relaxing the chest Pause for a little while The end of each exhalation and the end of each inhalation Thank you for chanting along with me We're going to look at a very important topic today, shraddha So, it's a huge topic, it's like Really the vast ocean and the bottom of the ocean and that which holds everything for us So, I wanted to ask myself, what is that I wanted to share about shraddha? What is that I want all of us to look at together about shraddha? And the first thing that comes to my mind is the breath Every time we breathe, because it's an unconscious process, it's something that's happening all the time From the moment we are born, from the moment we also become conscious of the breath and say, okay, I can do something with it There's some power in it But also, we allow the breath to just flow It's just taking care of itself, we don't have to do anything much about it Sometimes we recognize we have to take care of it, we have to create conditions for this Breath to flow very well because it has an impact on our health, on our Sense of well-being, on our state of mind, on everything So, once Desikachar, a teacher, shared a very beautiful word The breath is also called the shvasa, right? And the word he used is vishvasa Vishvasa is faith, right? Vishvasa is a certain conviction, a certain belief or a deep kind of faith And it is a special breath We, a special visheshah, breath is shvasa So, when you are, how he explained it is when you are in the presence of people Whom you trust, when you are in a space that allows you to trust completely I have full faith in this, I'll just do this Your breath is very, very special at that time You have to start watching your breath when you are in a space where you can Completely trust the flow of your prana Like whatever my prana is now going to meet, whatever my prana is going to bring back is going to be good for me Yeah? And when I'm able to trust that There is a different kind of a flow of the prana and therefore a different kind of a flow of the breath, vishvasa This idea of vishvasa is very strongly connected to also the idea of Virya, you know, the energy, somewhere The prana will pick itself up and start flowing Sometimes I might be very, very tired and exhausted and, you know Not really in a frame of mind to do anything And then there is some, like a little Light of hope or some, just one word or something that I hear And suddenly, I don't know from where, all the prana will gather itself And will be colimated and will be, I will be able to direct it in whatever I want to do If I believe in that, if I have that vishvasa in that That's the idea, yeah? So, vishvasa is shraddha And it gives me energy, it gives me the virya And the texts talk about this idea of vishvasa and the virya From where that energy comes and what is that energy Wanting me to direct the prana towards Is the words of the teacher, the upadesha Now, I have heard this from Desikachar, right? And every time I'm feeling low, I want to believe this This word, this vishvasa, this is word Suddenly, it awakens my prana, suddenly my breath is a different breath, it is not the breath, the past breath, right? It's a different breath and then I hold on to this breath and I work with it So that it will help me to gather my energy together And direct it in a meaningful manner in this very moment And also, the beauty of the breath is, it is what you experience in this moment We can't be with the last breath or the next breath And in this moment, what I invest in Is really the faith that I will breathe, that there will be the next breath, the faith that there will be the next breath I have also had the good fortune, I should say, in some sense to Watch, I haven't seen a baby being born And, you know, the first breath of the baby, the first cry of the baby But I've seen death very close, the last breath And it's, it's very powerful, extremely powerful Fascinating, you know, that breath is just now ready to leave the body And even there, there is a kind of, I mean, there could be struggle, there is all that in the physical body I saw it of my own mother But there is a certain beauty in it, you know, when that, that last breath Why am I talking about death today? Because it's as beautiful as everything else in life And one idea of the vishvasa is every step I take forward You know, sometimes I have to allow certain parts of me to die, only then something more beautiful can be born And that is the faith, that is the faith of me stepping forward to let go of what I'm hanging on to My possessions, the ideas of myself You know, the objects of my raga, dvisha, abhinivesha, prandhi And that requires that faith, that vishvasa That's what I wanted to begin with today The texts say, Bhagavad Gita, for example, in the seventeen chapter says "We are our shraddha, we are defined by our shraddha" "You know a person by their shraddha" It's a very, very simple statement, okay? Who am I at any given moment is defined by my shraddha So, it means that all of us have shraddha If we are alive, when there is prana, as long as there is prana, there is shraddha Yeah? But this shraddha may be sometimes blocked, hidden, dissipated and directed towards many things When I'm talking about shraddha in the context of a practitioner of yoga, you know, an aspirant of yoga It is the shraddha that we invest in wanting to understand the highest reality, what is the Brahman, what is the highest truth, who am I? That is the shraddha that a first chapter of Yoga Sutra is talking about Which actually keeps my abhyasa and my vairagya alive and strong But everybody has shraddha Somebody might have shraddha as a carpenter or a cook or an artist or, you know, somebody who's a swimmer Anything that you do You can direct that energy into that And you never give up, the idea of shraddha is one is to know what it is Okay, it's very important We think we already know it because we talked so much about it It's a very, very subtle feeling You know, even in research Quite some time ago, I think they did some research on this whole idea of the faith factor Doctor Benson, I think So, the faith factor is like, it is discovering that there is something inside me that Will change everything about how I'm responding to a treatment, like the placebo effect, you know? So, if I have faith in a medicine, then that will heal me So They talked about this faith factor and this whole elusive feeling or whatever, but it is very, very, very subtle It is even beyond the mind I have heard Desikachar say several times "Shraddha is beyond the mind, shraddha is beyond the mind", so we will discover where is the shraddha So, primarily, to be able to hold a certain idea which is so subtle Which is not something that I can grasp with my senses or my thinking, my analytical mind, my logical mind, right? Something that's much more than that, much deeper than that But I will be able to see it through the way somebody lives their life Through the way somebody does their actions In whatever they do, you can see that shraddha So, it's an invisible factor that is visible at many, many levels The way we speak, in the way we listen, in the way we walk In the way we do our actions, in the way we teach The way we cook, this quality of shraddha is something that is really visible So, it is visible to me, which means it is also visible to the world, right? Sometimes I can pretend It's possible, you know, mind can do all these tricks But there is inside me, that's a part of me that's saying that I am not sure about this, but I'm nodding and saying, yeah, 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 yeah But I'm not sure about this, I'm not sure Inside there is a little shakiness of that ground, yeah? So, what it is, we need to know, for that we need to know what it is not What is not shraddha And that often is only seen in, of course, the quality of the action itself, but the result So, when I say like, I think it is shraddha, I think it is shraddha But then, at the end of something, I will know, maybe it was not fully shraddha, maybe there was a lot of raga mixed in it, into it Added to it When I fail When I don't get acknowledged, when I don't, I'm not seen You know, when I don't receive a certain result as I expected it, as I wanted it Sukhanushayidvisha So, shraddha is not raga and very often shraddha is mixed with raga because we are living in the field of Vidyakshetram, so there is no Possibility that it can be just pure shraddha, there will be some amount of raga But to be able to differentiate that, separate it out and say, yeah, there is this amount of ragam, therefore, I got disappointed, therefore, I got hurt, therefore, I feel like I want to give it up You know, I want to give it up and maybe I want to look for something else No, when that point comes, I want to give it up and look for something else that dvisha has corrupted Dukhanushayidvisha, so the ragam has suddenly got converted to dvisha Like maybe this teacher is not the right teacher, maybe this is not the right practice for me, maybe I have to look for something Right? Now, if there is a healthy level of doubt, healthy level of skepticism It will help us to discover our shraddha and strengthen it on our path Shraddha also should not be blind There is a very tamasic level of shraddha Bhagavad Gita talks about Rajasic shraddha, tamasic shraddha and sattvic shraddha So, if I am in a tamasic mold, you know, there is more tamas in my system Then I will say I just blindly follow somebody To say blindly follow somebody, there's something wrong in it Okay? Because it means that I'm holding on to something and I want that and therefore I'm just ready to go in a direction It can be dangerous also because our shraddha can be molded, people can actually The way they treat you, the way they speak to you, the way they teach you, they train you They can actually take you in a completely different direction, yeah? So, it can be tamasic, it can be rajasic, I am putting my shraddha into it so that I will get this, so that I will get that, you know? Just completely driven by a certain outcome, certain need, desire, whatever, to some extent, I mean, that's how we are So, let's not be in denial of these energies of tamas and rajas Yeah, sometimes we, we just have to follow something, to start at least So, there is some amount of tamas And we need to look for some result because without that, I don't know whether I'm going in the right direction There is some amount of rajas But sattvic shraddha has a completely different quality And that is what we need to discover for ourselves And I'm not going to say how or what is that quality of the sattvic shraddha I think it is something for us to start observing within ourselves and understanding, yeah? Where is the shraddha? In the Panchimaya model of the Taitri Apannishad, shraddha is part of the Vijnanamaya It is even beyond the mind, so Vijnanamaya and the Anndamaya somewhere That are parts of ourself which are at a much deeper level Beyond the mind, we can say, beyond the thinking, acting, analytical, logical mind that can remember, imagine, etc. We use that mind, but at the Vijnanamaya level It is the, it is like the doer, you know, in Shankaracharya's commentary on the Taitri Apannishad He refers to Vijnanamaya as a kartta, as a doer So, who am I and what I do in my life, yeah, that is my Vijnanamaya And each one of us are very unique and special, we are very different We gather probably the same kind of knowledge, maybe the same teacher or the same school is teaching us But who we are and how we are shaped is very, very unique and different And that is actually shown in our action Therefore, the kartta is the Vijnanamaya, right? And the head of the kartta is shraddha The body is atma, the body, the atma is yoga, says yoga atma And the wings, the right and the left parts are the ritam and the satya And the tail is the higher intelligence, the larger universal intelligence, which is the mahat The head is shraddha, it's like the baby, when the baby is born, it's the head comes first So, in everything, shraddha has to be in the forefront of everything So, take a pause right now Observe your breath for a moment Completely exhale, trusting that The next breath is coming from the very source of your existence And then draw the breath from deep inside your heart Let the breath be born Full of that shraddha Feel your whole being with it, your body, your mind Every cell Hold your breath for a few seconds And then slowly exhale and as you exhale, withdraw your attention back into your heart Breathing in and breathing out When the mind is quiet. One can get in touch with the very source of the breath. And draw the strength from that. Let your prana be filled with this understanding of Shraddha. And that's who we are. Well. Being. Waiting to be discovered, strengthened. Waiting to flow. Expand and express itself. In our thoughts, in our words, in our actions. And the way we live our life, moment to moment. I don't know how I got muted. Sorry. You can wake up now. Something else is working, okay? In the Yoga Sutra, Shraddha is called Upaya Pratyaya. This is in the commentary to the Yoga Sutra. So there are two kinds of people, two kinds of um I would say ways in which you reach the state of yoga. One is a people who are already born with a certain quality. They have a very strong Shraddha, they they have a very quiet mind, the mind is predominant with the Satva, the Satvika quality. And therefore, there's great clarity and understanding. And for such a mind, it is not a big deal. The Chitavriti Nirodha is just a matter of a little more practice and patience. But for the rest of us, so those people are called the Bhava Pratyaya. For rest of us, it is Upaya Pratyaya, that I need some upaya. I need something that will take me towards the goal. And Shraddha is the upaya. Shraddha is the means that will help me to take me to the goal. And this Shraddha will strengthen my Abhyasa, my effort to stay with everything that I need, my practices, my attitude. Everything that will help me to stay on the path of yoga and Vairagya. That which will give me the clarity to know what has to fall away and the Abhyasa, the stronger it is, the stronger the Vairagya. So the Upaya Pratyaya, it Shraddha also, the stronger the Shraddha. The faster you reach the goal. Tevra Samve Gana Asana. Patanjali is also saying Shraddha can be in different intensities. Ritu Madhyadimatra, it can be weak sometimes, it can be moderate, it can be very, very intense. For the same person and for different people. So because Shraddha is not the same all the time for all of us. Patanjali offers another tool. Ishvara Pranidhana. But the interesting thing is without Shraddha, even Ishvara Pranidhana is not possible. You cannot have faith in something higher without that quality of Shraddha. But I can invest my Shraddha in the Ishvara. Or in the words of the teacher, or in the words of the scriptures, whatever that might be because I myself feel that I don't have the strength within. So at least when we don't feel strong enough, when we we feel bogged down, when we feel pressurized, when there's just too much happening. We don't have the strength, at least I should have enough Shraddha to hook on to something outside of me. At least the idea is something outside of me. Could be the words of my teacher, listening to a chant or just being in the presence of uh somebody or prayer or whatever that might be, that will help me to activate that Shraddha within me. So that's the idea in Yoga Sutra. So it's very, very important for all of us as practitioners because we are living in this world. We are on a roller coaster ride. There is plenty of Rajas and Tamas in our system and outside of us. We cannot perpetually be in a Satvik environment and only eat Satvik food and only have Satvik people around us. It's not happening. Because Satva to some extent is boring. So we need excitement, we need lot of color and all those things. So Rajas and Tamas will come. White absorbs all the colors, but it is the red and the black and all those that create that excitement, right? So having said that, we need to cultivate the Shraddha, this this little seedling inside us. Sometimes it's very strong, sometimes it's not so strong. It needs to be protected, it needs to be cultivated. So we need to know what its obstacles are for ourselves. Each one of us with our propensity, our constitution and our personality, we may have certain things which are greater obstacle for us than some other. Some people it can it can be sensory indulgence, some people it can be doubt, some people it can be uh strong emotions or some people it can be past memories that cloud us. We keep going back to it and reliving our victimhood that doesn't let us connect to the present moment. Right? And what potential is there in this moment that we can draw from? So we need to understand our own obstacles. We also need to understand what awakens our Shraddha, what strengthens it. So how can I cultivate it? What do I nurture the seed with? And this again can be very unique for each one of us. You know, for some of us, it is chanting, could be just listening to chanting. Sometimes it's actually sitting down and just chanting something. I may not have a great voice, I may not even know this chant, I may not even know the meaning, but let me just chant. And the sound of the chant, that reverberation of that sound and the power of it might shift something in my prana. Might at least clear out some of the tamasic energy in my system. And then it might give me some more. You know, just just physical energy. You know, to get up and move and do my practice or just get up from the bed and you know, go and have a cup of tea, whatever that might be, I just need to move. And I need to find that one thing that will help me. And use that as an anchorage. So in our practice, to discover that and to stay with it, it could be something that you stay with for enough time to make that into a habit. Say every time I feel weak, I can go back to this, I can use this. Yeah, for me it is some, it is two things, one is actually chanting or listening to chanting. And when I am listening to chanting, I I try to visualize my teacher chanting. Chanting for me. And that awakens my Shraddha. And sometimes it's for me, listening to a discourse. Can be listening to Jayakrishnamurti or Thich Nhat Hanh, my Vedanta teacher. Right? Something that shifts inside you, say, yeah, that's something. It sort of helps to clear the clouds a little bit, reduce the heaviness a little bit. And so that that idea of Shravanam, listening, it's a very powerful idea. Because the sound has a certain power to awaken something very, very deep, something very, very primordial. So the idea of Smriti, Shraddha Veeris Smriti, Smriti is also the original goal. The memory of the original goal. Then I need to remember why I am here, what is the purpose of my life? I am here to discover something about myself, to understand myself. What I see as myself is not who I am because it is meeting suffering all the time. It is not able to handle all the problems of life. So there must be something more, there must be something greater that I want to discover and that memory of that goal has to be awakened. Yeah, that is the memory and that may sometimes be hidden in the words of the teacher. So therefore Shraddha is often related to the Apta, the words of the teacher. In Yoga Sutra, it talks about Prateksha, Anumana and Agama, three ways of Brahmana. Prateksha is direct understanding. Anumana is through inference. I have some direct experience and the rest of it I infer. But Agama is the words of the teacher. Now, there are many, many things at very, very subtle levels that you cannot experience in Prateksha. Yeah, a beginning student, students just starting the journey of yoga. Somebody who comes for therapy and you give them a very simple practice. Maybe they have gone to ten different doctors, they've told them how complicated the problems. And you teach them some simple breathing exercise, some simple movement. How would they have Shraddha in what you're teaching because it's so simple? And the complicated mind cannot fathom that something so complicated. We all like to have complicated problems, right? We all like to have these fantastic terminologies behind our symptoms. And that's who we are, we become that. And then if somebody says, just breathe and do this movement, something will happen, how can I have Shraddha? Because I'm not experienced it, right? The student has not experienced, they obviously cannot have it. But if they have some faith in the teacher, in the teachings, maybe the teacher also is new, yeah? I'm just a new teacher, how will the student know me for them to have faith in me? So if my teacher or my teacher's teacher or the lineage or the original teacher, if that student has some faith in yoga itself as a system. Then something can be awakened, then they do their practice. They do their practice and then they feel something, something has shifted for them. And sometimes it's just a moment, it's like one moment. It's very beautiful to discover that moment. And sometimes that moment also you lose it. Because old samskaras take over, Rajas and Tamas takes over, it dissolves it. Then again and again and again I revisit that and I build on that. Like particle after particle after particle has to be built until it becomes a force. And sometimes it takes many, many years. I I can tell you for myself, it took for me many years to develop that Shraddha in yoga itself. It didn't happen overnight. I didn't come to yoga with full faith in what is, I didn't even know what is yoga. I just came to work in a yoga institute. So my Shraddha built over a period of time through my own illness and healing, through watching people healing. Slowly it built and then I don't know when that happened. That for me, this is the ground for everything, like I have absolute faith in it, I it's like there's no doubt. But the method, the tools, I have to discover. I don't know exactly this is what will work for somebody. So sometimes I don't even know what tools to use for somebody. You know, I have to observe carefully, I have to listen carefully, then I have to trust, I have to pray. You say, I don't know, but there's something that has to work through me for the student because the student has come back with this amount, this amount of faith. So let that work through. So I have to trust that Ishvara or you know, the teachings that the generations of teachers have left within us. That Upadesha that's there silently, you know, the silent teacher inside that's waiting to teach you. And allow your mind to be quiet, you know, only when your mind is quiet can the teacher's teaching can be heard. And sometimes you don't even hear it, you just do something and something happens. Right? So this idea of Apta, that faith in the teacher is something that probably some people have a lot, some of us, we have a very skeptical mind, which is great, which is beautiful. But when we start experiencing it, to be able to hold on to it is very important. Some people want data, we want research data to prove that it will work. You know, it's very sad, sometimes people come with certain condition. They're saying, have you data to prove that yoga will cure this condition or heal this condition or make me feel better? If you have the data, then I will practice. Unfortunately, we haven't gathered much of that data and we should be probably for such minds, you know? That such minds can hold on to something. And I also have a scientific mind and I also want to, I also want to see that. It's not that yoga, I don't want to prove yoga, I want to prove how yoga works. What are the ingredients that go into the healing process? And it is not just some kind of a chemical process. It's it's a, it's a much deeper process and Shraddha is the catalyst for any form of healing. Any form of healing. Even for somebody to move from seven out of ten pain to six and a half out of ten pain. Shraddha is there because that only that will make them practice. If there is no Shraddha, even a little bit of amount of Shraddha, nobody is going to practice. They will take the sheet home and they will look at it, yeah, I have to do it. My teacher said I have to do it, I believe in this teacher, I believe in yoga, everybody believes in yoga, most people believe in yoga. But we have to practice and to practice, there is that little energy, that push it has to have. Maybe I practice one day, I feel good, I go back. I forget. So that practice has to be consistent, Shraddha has to be cultivated. And as teachers, we also have to learn how to cultivate it for the student. How to, how to help them cultivate it. And for that, we need to discover our own Shraddha and see how we need to make it better. Yeah? So I'm going to stop here just with a few ideas on how to cultivate the Shraddha. We can look at cultivating the Shraddha to take care of our body. Through food, through asana practice. That will take us towards greater level of sthiram and sukham, stability. Now, why is Vijnanamaya the, the body is yoga, you know, this whole part that's between my throat and my, the base of my spine, that whole part has to have steadiness. And it has to be comfortable, all the vital organs are here. So when there is steadiness, there is a certain rhythm that takes care of your breathing, your heart, functioning, your digestion, all the other functions. And that steadiness of your body is actually going to be reflected in the steadiness of your arms, your feet. And your mind, yeah? So at the level of the body, the more we are able to discover sthiram and sukham. We are able to cultivate a certain relationship of infusing that Shraddha in taking care of our body. The Shraddha in breath is defined by the quality of tirgha and sooshu. How subtle my breath is, there's no force, there's no pulling and pushing and struggling with the breath. Just let it flow. Right? Flow with a certain quality of quietness. Like a very quiet river, slowly. That's the quality of Shraddha we bring into our breath. And when the breath becomes more and more subtle and deep. That will help us to connect to the Shraddha, the within us. That will help us to connect to the Shraddha, the within us. With the mind, it is cultivating a satvika mind. A mind that is steady and stable, not shaky. Not running after hundred things. Not indulgent. You know, when the Rajasic and the Tamasic qualities come down in the mind. There is a certain clarity, lightness and stability that comes in the mind. A mind that can reflect to me a reality better and better. So how do I know that I'm cultivating my Shraddha? I will know it by the quality of my asana practice. Quality of my pranayama practice with the quality of. The way I live my life, my mind is everywhere, not just in my meditation, right? The way I live my life, the way I do my actions, the way I relate to people. The way I listen. The way I understand what my prana is carrying, the way I work on purifying myself. That reflects my Shradha. So the Yamaniyamas. Cannot be practiced without Shraddha and when we practice them, the Shraddha is strengthened. So it's like the. Say no, if I have this, then this will happen, but when this happens, this will get strengthened. So we have to begin somewhere. If a student says I have only five minutes, give them something for five minutes, even though five minutes is nothing. In twenty-four hours for them to change their samskara, but that five minutes might expand. To seven minutes, to ten minutes, to fifteen minutes longer. Start somewhere. And start where the student is, not the idea of where they already should be. This is very important for a yoga teacher, we have done our practice, we have fallen, got up, we have got bruised, we have gone through all this. Drama to discover something more, but somebody who's coming for the first time, don't expect them to come with a lot of faith. A lot of understanding, a lot of awareness, let's not expect anything. They're coming, that's great, somebody is coming, you say thank you for coming because I can't teach when I don't have a student. I have to say thank you all for coming today. On Vijayashrimi Day, early morning, thank you for coming because if you're not there, I can't do this, right? So that kind of reverence is very important that we build for a student. See that person as our equal. I, I may have traversed the path a little longer, but they have lived their life. It's not just the age, you know, we don't know what that person is carrying. So how do we bring Shraddha into our teaching is a very, very important idea. If it is, if my teaching is driven by what am I going to get out of it, am I going to be seen as a good teacher, am I going to. Get other material benefits out of it, all this is important, it keeps us alive, it is very important, but. There's something more that needs to drive us. What will drive me to come into a class? What is that something more? And how do we cultivate that, how do we strengthen that? I leave it to all of us to go back and work with it every day morning. On the teaching days, I hope, hopefully there are days when you're not teaching. When you can just work with yourself, only, only with ourself and the family and all that. But on teaching days, just two minutes before you start your practice. Get in touch with that little seed inside. That little seed, sometimes you, you think it is very strong, but sometimes it just minimized itself into very, very tiny, very, very weak seedling. Just put a little protective fencing over it, work with your breath. So you can empower that little one, because that little one. Has the power to empower millions of people. Eight o'clock, we'll do a pranayama practice, okay? On Shraddha, so I'm going to chant the Shraddha Sutam, some of you know it, not going to get into the meanings today. But we'll do a pranayama practice, so there are six. Passages. When I chant the first line, you inhale, okay? Then when I pause, you chant that line or just pause, I'm going to chant it two times. No, yeah, I'm going to chant it two times, so second time I chant softly, you hold your breath. You go back to that seat. So when I start chanting, you awaken your breath, you go into that little space in your heart. Then you chant mentally on hold after inhale. Then you exhale, then you chant mentally hold after exhale, okay? So you can do Nadi Shodhana or Ujjie, whatever you're comfortable with, Anlom Ujjie, but let, that. Let's not get carried away by the technique. And if the breath is too short or too long, just stay with the rhythm. And or just work with your own breath and listen to them, okay? The action or the technique is not so important, the bhavana is very important. Okay, so take a moment to stabilize your posture. Connect with your natural breath. Connect with the space deep inside your heart, the center of the chest, just above the dief. Exhale completely.
Shraddha yaagni samidhyate. Om. Shraddha yaagni samidhyate. Shraddha yaavindate havi. Shraddha yaavindate havi. Shraddham bhagasya murdhani. Shraddham bhagasya murdhani. Vacha saavedaya masi. Vacha saavedaya masi. Priyakshradhey dadataha. Priyakshradhey dadataha. Priyam hoje shuyajvasu. Priyam hoje shuyajvasu. Idamma oditankruthi. Idamma oditankruthi. Yathadeva asureshu. Shraddhamogreshu chakri re. Shraddhamogreshu chakri re. Evam hoje shuyajvasu. Evam hoje shuyajvasu. Asma kamoditankruthi. Vaayur gopa upasate. Vaayur gopa upasate. Shraddha gumhrdayaya kootya. Shraddha gumhrdayaya kootya. Shraddha yahoyate havi. Shraddha yahoyate havi. Shraddham pratarhava mahi. Shraddham pratarhava mahi. Shraddha gum suryasyanambrachi. Shraddha gum suryasyanambrachi. Shraddhey shraddha payehama. Shraddhey shraddha payehama. Shraddha devanadhivastey. Shraddha visvamidanjagat. Avisha vardhaya masi. Avisha vardhaya masi.
I can awaken and deepen and strengthen my Shraddha. By bringing my mind back to my body and my breath. By being attentive. By completely trying to get myself into this moment. Like the attention of the mother for her child. Can I come back and again and again and again into my practice? Into whatever I can hold on to that will build and strengthen my Shradha. Even a tiny, tiny streak of light. Of the sunlight. Can awaken the seed and let it grow and move towards the light. And as we move towards the light within us. Know that we're all together. We have the teachers, we have the teachings, we have the Sangha. We have our breath. We have this beautiful body. We have this earth that supports us. Just knowing that and remembering that is enough. Even a mighty river is born from tiny droplets from spring. To trust that Shraddha is in everyone. And as a practitioner and as a teacher, my job is just to create conditions. For that, to be strengthened, that to grow and for that to. Not just inspire myself, but change the world. In whatever small or big ways. To wish you a wonderful year ahead. Of study, of practice, reflection, of working together. Of reaching out to more and more people who need yoga. In the way that they can receive practice and nourish themselves. Which is part quietly. There's no need to say anything. Just go back and work with the seat.